Welcome to Montgomery County Republican Club's Direct Line Show. As we promised in our newsletter this morning, we have an extra special, super surprise guest for us, and we are joined by the Councilwoman Nicole Ackley from Wycomica County. She has been on the council. She's in her first term and about to be up for reelection for her council seat. And our hosts tonight is Mark Unkfer and Don Irvine. Take it away, guys.
Well, welcome Nicole and welcome, Don. And we're great to glad to have you on. You have been, you're constantly running, are you not? Are people in Wycomico County saying to you, were you just running for office? And now you, so to explain a little bit about why, how you've been through this process a couple of times before. Obviously, you ran in 2020 and you're coming up in 2022. Explain why that is.
So well, thank you for that great introduction. I really appreciate it and all of you gentlemen for having me on your show. I, I love shopping in Montgomery County. That's the Mecca of shopping. So I, it's great to connect with all of you. I was initially appointed a council member. He resigned. He moved from the area. And then a referendum on the ballot in 2016, we had made an amendment to our charter to say anyone who was replaced within a presidential year had to run for office. So it just so happened right after I was appointed, I had to run for office. And now that two-year period will be up in 2022, and I'll be running again.
Now, did you run countywide or in a district?
I ran in the district. I have a, my district is District Two. It's the largest geographical district in Wycomico County. And it's close to 30,000 citizens.
Now, you took over for Mark Kilmer, and I, I don't know him well, but he used to be very involved with Maryland Public Policy Institute, which is, was one of the really thoughtful think tanks about, from a conservative or right-of-center perspective. And he did a lot of good work. So, well, we're glad that he made room for you on the council by leaving, but he will be missed as being somebody who was very involved. I should probably now reference the fact that you're somewhat in the dark. And we're keeping our fingers crossed that we keep your connection up because you're using a DSL connection. I did see from your, your campaign that broadband is a really important issue in your, well, in your district and in your county. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, I think it's, it's always been somewhat of an issue. It became very pronounced when the pandemic hit and we were all working from home. Kids were not able to connect at home. Majority of my district, some had hotspots. There, there's even areas that don't have cell towers. So they were just unable to be educated and access education. So it was really a, we, we hit this breaking moment where we had to do something. And so I, you know, I sat down with our IT department and I really mapped out my district to see what are the absolute priorities. So we're, within my district is a very large geographical district, mostly a rural area, areas. And so what were the pockets that we had families that first priority was get kids connected so they could be in school? Second priority was getting people to work online who needed to be. So we were able to really map that out and working with our delegation, they were able to get some emergency funding so that the, the one concentrated area that we have in the far tip of my district, we were able to get connected.
That's great. That's good news. That's, it's interesting. It's also from, from an, obviously that's important for people just to get their kids connected to school or to be able to do work. But it's also really important for economic development, isn't it? Because people who may be moving to an area really also expect to be able to have broadband.
And I think it's, I think it's worked in Wycomico County's benefit because we have a lot of great things here to offer. It is, it's a very beautiful area. We have a great healthcare system here. We have a tertiary care center. We have two universities. We're very fortunate in what we have. And so I think it had, it's been a draw. It's been a draw to bring people to relocate here. We have, we have our public school system and then we have three very good private schools too. So it's, it's really, if there was, if there was light at the end of the COVID tunnel, I would say that it's, it's really transformed Wycomico County.
That's good to hear. So what are the other issues? You talked a little bit about some of the healthcare issues and you do have some institutions in the county. How have they held up with COVID?
We are incredibly blessed to have previously PRMC, but now Title Health, our health department, which I told, we have the most amazing health officer because she has been on it. I mean, this entire time, I don't think she's had a vacation since it hit. But they have, they've really worked collaboratively to make sure that all the community needs were met. We did have a mass vaccine site, which we opened at our civic center. And we had overflow beds and we had a specific COVID unit at Title Health at the hospital. Thank God we didn't have to use it because we had enough beds, but we were, we were very blessed in, in having those relationships.
And you, from what I'm hearing, it was not quite as contentious here in Montgomery County. We had, how shall I say, a more contentious relationship with our chief health officer. This is sort of characteristic of sometimes of the, how shall I say, polarization that took place during COVID that, that has been unfortunate.
Yes, I, I think that's definitely, I've seen that throughout the state, but we are truly blessed in the health officer. And she really listens to citizens. She's, she's really been very engaged with the healthcare community, the public school system. She's just really tried to work with everyone.
You know, it's an interesting that you use the verb listen because I think that's been one of, sometimes the challenge of, of, of it's, it's hard sometimes to convince people to do things when they're being talked down to. And I think that's the perception that a lot of people had that created some, something of a pushback. The reluctance to go along with a lot of the recommendations because there was this kind of sense that people were advocating things that maybe they weren't going to apply for themselves or that, so it's, it's very, very helpful on that. Now, the county is what, about 100, getting close to 100,000? Did you get above 100,000 with the new census?
We did, 110.
Wow, okay. So you're-
We had some growth.
Right? Now, where is, where is most of the growth coming from? Are there people from out of the area? Or is it households growing? Or how, where, where is it all coming from?
It's, we are seeing more in the urban areas, that the urban, the area of Salisbury had some growth. We also had some in the smaller municipalities with Fruitland and Sharp Town. It seems as though people are moving away from being in, in the city and wanting a little bit of suburban, but not totally far out. They're still able to access the public schools and access shopping. So that seems to be where we had the most growth. But we see pretty, we didn't see too much for the census, this past census.
So I, and I assume the Salisbury being located there is an important draw as well?
Yes, yes. And with, with COVID, many of the-
Referring, of course, to the university. I'm sorry. Yes, not just the town, right?
Yeah, they, they went, unfortunately went home. And so a lot of them weren't counted in the census either.
Got it. Okay. So tell me a little bit more about what, what happens in the county on economic development. We've talked about broadband. We've talked about the healthcare issues, but what else is attracting people to the area?
I would definitely say the airport. We have a fairly large airport. We received almost $20 million in COVID funding specifically for the airport, airport growth. So that has been, that has been a big, a big draw. We also have our, our agriculture, big agriculture business in this area. And we're very fortunate because we, we can work with our farmers and work respectfully and let, and foster their growth, but not impede on it. So we've been, we've been very fortunate to find that nice, happy balance.
That has been something of a challenge, hasn't it? Sometimes that the environmentalists, the Western, Western shores of the Chesapeake have really been kind of insensitive to particularly the needs of the, of the chicken poultry industry. How do you, how do you recommend setting the right balance for that?
Well, I think, I think since I've been appointed as a critical area commissioner, I think it has brought a lot of clarity to me on how some decisions are made without those throughout the state understanding how the culture here, what our culture is like and what's important to us. So I've, I've really been able to bring some insight into that, into that committee. And really just, you know, we, we want farming. We want the environment. We want to protect our environment. But we wanted, we want to do it safely. And we want to make sure that we're not, like I said, not impeding on our farmers or their businesses.
Right. So can you elaborate on some of the kind of approaches that you think work a little better for that?
Well, I think that we've, you know, we've, we've had some issues recently and they've, of course, they've been in my district. We had, we have an issue with a DAF tank where a farmer has decided to put a DAF tank, which is their solid waste that they distribute for agricultural purposes. And trying to find, you know, how do we, how do we allow, because it is a business and it's an agriculture product, but how do we find the best way to dispose of that waste safely? And make it economically feasible for him to continue doing it because we, we don't want to hinder that either. So we've worked quite a bit with the University of Maryland, University of Maryland Eastern Shore to come up with some best technologies on how we are going to move forward in the future with, with disposal of chicken waste.
Sounds good.
And I think we got some good, I think we got some good stuff coming.
There's been, over the years, there've been a lot of efforts to do it, trying to even looking at it as potential fuel as well as, I guess, also a, a, a natural fertilizer. I don't, you probably have too much for the natural fertilizer, but enough to be able to use elsewhere for that, right?
Yeah. And with, and looking at the nutrient management plans, I think has really been key in finding the best biodegradable digestion process that there is. Because we're also close to the water. So we have a lot of neat things there.
Yes. Now, you're, how much of the county is waterway? You're kind of a ways, are you not?
So we are on the Wycomico River.
Okay, on the river. Okay, got it. Yeah.
And the Chesapeake Bay.
Right. And so, so I, we talked a little bit about the county. You know, I, I assume like other counties, about half your budget goes to the schools, right?
Well, 52%.
52%. It seems to be a, usually it's a little above 50%. Would you comment a little bit about, about your school system and how they've dealt with, with COVID?
We definitely have had some challenges. It's, it's been very challenging, I think. I think one of the, the reasons I can think of the most is the connectivity problem. And people are not connected and they can't communicate. And there's no real way to communicate. It's frustrating. And there's a lot of frustration that was building, building, building. And with the school, the school board decided to have Zoom meetings. And so they weren't able, citizens weren't able to come in and speak or have access to the meetings. And so I think that was, that, that built some, some tensions. And we've, you know, most recently, the mask mandate has come down, which parents are not happy with. And I, I understand, I get it. I have three kids in the public, well, two now in public school system. So I get it. It's, it's difficult. And I think there's a lot of emotion that goes into it also, really just trying to get to the facts, right? Like take the motion away from it. And I think when we communicate with our school board, we try to really just stick to the facts and the, the problem and the solution and not get too caught up in the emotion.
Well, that's, that's helpful and hard, it's hard sometimes to do, but it's worth aspiring to, to try and, and strike that balance. Now, you mentioned that your, your kids, and as I also understand, you've been involved with the TAR program, Republican Teenage Republican Program. So I think we know how you got started on that. It's usually it's an example, I, I can tell you from personal experience, it's often a case of a being draft, a parent being drafted by a kid rather than vice versa. But tell me a little bit about what you're doing with that.
Well, during my election, we, because it was an off-year, it was a presidential race. It was a pretty contentious race. And having three children at home and hearing a lot of it or going to school and hearing some of the things that were being said, it was hurtful for them. And they, they felt, because my husband and I raise our children with conservative values, they had, they have always, it's always been instilled in them, just feeling like other kids felt like that too, but they weren't comfortable sharing it. And so they were almost like the silent majority where they couldn't say how they really felt. And my daughter, my middle daughter came to me and she said, Mom, I'm just, I just feel like I, there's people like me, but no one wants to say it. It's, we're like, we have to like whisper in the hallway or we have to talk about it on the bus or something. And I thought that's, you know, that's, that's not, that's not healthy. That's not how we want our society to be. We want everyone to be comfortable in sharing their beliefs and being respectful of one another. And so that's, was really the motivating factor. And my daughter researched TARS and she, she is very driven and she, she has very strong beliefs too. So, yeah, I have, I can't take the credit for it. It was, it was really her. She got it all going up and moving. And so now they're, they're full on.
Forgive me, but my, to digress into my own story is that when I was a teenage Republican, I recruited my mother and, and she had to, not for TARS, but she ended up getting involved in the Women's Federation.
Okay.
And was very active. And I can remember going to actually accompany her when I was a young teenager to the national convention because you, you kind of felt like, really, can I let this young kid go do all this political stuff? And obviously there's, it's great to have the TARS as a, an opportunity to kind of channel that activity.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's really been, it's, it's funny. She just said to me the other day because she was reading through the, the man, the, what the TARS have recommended at the national level. And she said, you know, Mom, I really want to endorse you in the primaries, but I just don't think it'd be right at this time. We can't endorse it. I'm her mom.
A, a stickler for the bylaws, I'll tell you.
She's all about it.
You know, it, it's funny you mention it. So I will digress to a few years ago with the TARS and accompanied to, accompanying my daughter, who was in high school, to a meeting of the state TARS because there have been cycles over the years. And I particularly remember one of the people who was in that group was Jake Slade, who is a county chairman, the county commissioner is up in Western Maryland and is now running for the state. He's done two terms already and before he's 30 and is now running for the state senate, one of the seats that's, that's now open. And so what's, what's fascinating over the years is to, to see the TARS and to also see their own individual engagement continue on. And so I, I saw at that dinner, I was out in Garrett County last Friday, and I saw one of the more active TARS from Harford County and said, the pressure's on you because Jake's, look what he's been able to do. And I, I think it's fair to say she was, she seemed ready to take up that responsibility.
It's, it's amazing how, you know, I feel like there are so many like-minded, I guess, young people who just don't, haven't really found a place to connect. And I just, I hate to see that. I think it's, it's really sad to be shown for your beliefs. And so especially in this area, I think it's becoming more and more accepted that you can have conservative values and you are just like anyone else. I mean, you're not, you don't have any crazy agendas. You just want to share the same like, the like-minded ideas.
Sounds good to me. So she's got a chapter. Do they have regular meetings or how are they, how are they proceeding?
They do, yes. They have regular meetings. They attended some recent school board meetings instead of having their formal meeting because they wanted to make a presence there. So we, we did that for this past, this past month. But prior to that, they were having two meetings a month. Then we tried to do something fun for one of the meetings. We had a cookout here at my house and we had, we had a speaker come for the other meeting. So just trying to do something, one, one business and then one something fun.
Sounds good. But you're, you're absolutely right. And we're actually one of the, how shall I say, strong activists within the club who was going to be co-host with me, was actually with, or Don. Unfortunately, he's got an exam tonight. So Ryan Nydak, Ryan-
Oh, yeah. Isn't it Ryan?
Yeah, Ryan. Well, Ryan was, you know, very much an, an active TAR and, and brought in a number of people who are, you know, continuing in a variety of roles on central committee and involved in college Republicans. But it's-
I have a great story about Ryan.
Go ahead. Please tell me.
I had, like I said, I had somewhat of a contentious race and, you know, Congressman Harris was, was trying to pull out everything to help me, you know? And, and we had a Super Saturday and all the young Republicans came down and helped me door knock. And it was just, we had such a good time that day. Very just great, great group of people. And so I, I'm forever indebted to them. I always tell them when I see them, thank you so much because I, I was, I was definitely getting outnumbered.
Well, your race was a real priority. We didn't mention the fact that, forgive me, there's seven members or nine members? I can't remember of the council.
There's seven.
Seven members. Okay. So your seat was potentially the, would have been the, potentially the shifting in control. So holding, holding the seat was very much a, or taking the seat in the part of the Democrats was very much a priority across the state. So we were all-
No pressure there. I was, you know-
No pressure on you. Well, you withstood it well and, and now, now you're like an old hand in it, right? Not old, but an old hand and ready to run, run, run for reelection next year. But yes, no, it was very much a priority. And even in the middle of a presidential with all the other stuff that was going on, the sort of the balance of power in the county was, was up, was up and up for grabs.
I had so much support. I was so incredibly blessed with great people. The state party to our local party, like I said, the young Republicans, I, I had, I feel like I had everybody on board. It was, it was just such a great turnout.
That's great. So before him, we actually have another person who was very involved in the club, Matt Foldy. Now, you, you may not remember him because now he's a journalist. So he's been working with the Washington Free Beacon. But when he, he was a TAR here in Montgomery County and then he went to the University of Chicago. And I raise him because one of the things that he did out there was very involved with the sort of First Amendment movement of, of working with campuses around the country to protect basically free speech, to protect alternatives and did a fair amount of activity in that area. And so while he was involved with the college Republicans and he was actually even the ward chairman in the ward in Hyde Park, where the University of Chicago is, which was Barack Obama's home ward.
I was gonna say, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, I know. He was, he was the, the ward committeeman there. But he was also very involved in the free speech stuff. Don, you've worked a lot on that stuff already. I don't know if you've got more to add on some of the stuff that Matt was doing because it's been a real, a real challenge to get that right.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's one of the great examples, I think, for all of us, at least from MOCO, for everything he did. And he was definitely very active and, you know, I, I think we all, for all those of us who have known him, we remember his attire at certain events. He, he stood out far and above a lot of other people as a result of that. But it's, it's great to see people like Matt do that. Nicole, I'm a little disappointed. I was, I was waiting with bated breath on a really good Ryan story, something that was being embarrassing, you know? You're far too complimentary.
Goodness. I have to think. I know, I know I, you know, I have to dig back in here, but I, I-
We want, we want something to go back to.
I've done some good ones. Those young Republicans, they kept me hopping. I'm telling you what, I was like, I was ready to take a nap and they were on to the next precinct, door knocking. They kept me moving. That was good.
Well, Mark, I'm curious about one thing here because just going back to what you said earlier about the census and everything like that. With, with the area having grown, does this make a political change? You know, I mean, as well does, is it, or the dynamic going to stay roughly the same?
You know, previous to the 2018 election, our council was always like six Republicans, one Democrat. And that had been for as long as I've lived here. And it was just in 2018 when, when it flipped. And I, I, I saw a trend of maybe becoming a little bit more to the left. I think since, maybe since some of the recent events that happened, I feel that people are more bound to their conservative values than ever. So I see in 2022, us taking the council back as the majority and a strong majority, not just a four-three, but as a six-one.
That'll, it'll be interesting to see. Certainly the polling data has shown a, a real, a real trend. In fact, I, not to digress, but to digress a little bit, I noticed today that, now, two months ago, the Biden White House was all upset because Vice President Harris was doing so poorly in the polls that this was going to be a really bad thing. I noticed that the Gallup poll today now shows that Harris is doing better than Biden. Not that, not that, not that she's doing well in the grand scheme of things. It's just, she's, she's actually, I think, in a, in a slightly stronger position than Joe Biden, which is, I guess, to tell you how, how bad things have deteriorated for him. I think relative to the race that we're, the races that we're talking about is that by all accounts translates into the way voters vote in the off-years.
Yeah. And I think we've had some pretty significant events happen in our county too, that I think have, have really, it's really brought a lot of attention to local politics with citizens. We had some different tax abatements that were passed through that weren't, weren't necessarily the best for the citizens in the rural communities. And so I think that people are paying a lot more attention. I also think people are paying a lot more attention to school board races. And I, you know, I, that's always been, that's always been something I pay close attention to. We just got an elected school board in 2018. Ours was always appointed.
Really?
Yeah. So it's, it's fairly new to us. But I think that it, it's, it's really showing the importance of those positions, that it's, it's not just a board that's aside. I mean, they, that's a, it's a, a large part of our budget, our county's budget, state's budget, and something we really need some strong leadership in. It's not something that, that you can take lightly.
That, that is great. And I think that you put your finger on just how much more contentious those races. So we were, I was at, with others, a fundraiser last week in Antarundale for a more conservative school board member, which was well-attended. But one of the fascinating things is there were, there were protesters out front. And I was thinking, now that, that's not like the school board races that I remember from-
No.
Believe me, you, you've only just recently had it in your county. But the idea that people would be protesting, but that's the nature of just how, how polarized many people are and just a whole host of issues that school boards are now dealing with.
I mean, our last school board meeting, there were 150 citizens there to speak. I don't think we've ever had more than 50 at our council meetings. I mean, it was, it was a pretty, it went almost two in the morning. It was, it was a long night. And I, I think that they're definitely going to be much more contentious and something we really, that every county is going to have to focus on, on making it a priority.
And it's important that although, I mean, although there certainly are nonpartisan races, there is a history, and particularly in the part of the teachers' union, to take a very active role in those races. And so I assume you have the apple ballot there. Oh, maybe that, maybe you didn't have it before 2018. Oh, no, you didn't have that.
I wasn't on the apple ballots.
No, 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 no. I know that. No, I'm, I, I didn't even have to ask. Your chances of being in the apple ballot were zero.
Zero, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. But we do have the apple ballot there.
You do have the apple ballot, yes. So-
But it's, it's interesting though that you say that because we've had three people file now for the Board of Education, to run for the Board of Education. And they have verbal, to me, we don't even want on that apple ballot. You know, because it's, it's, I think with Zoom, everything being televised and you see how involved the teachers' union are, even more so than what the people are. It's, it's, I think citizens don't really want that involved in their elected officials.
That's an excellent, that's an interesting point. I think- I think that there's been, in addition to the the nature of the issues, there's also been more of visibility or more transparency as people watch what's 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 the what goes on at the council. I think in Montgomery County, a year ago, there was an issue where the county, the the board was about to try and reopen. This was got a year ago, we were hoping to do that. And the 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 union said no, and they did a 180 without even, you know, without even any discussion. It was a real reflection just how powerful they were in deciding what could and couldn't happen in the schools. And I think a lot of people have known that before, but it was sort of that much more apparent as a result of what's been what we've been going through for the last year and a half.
The last the last meeting that I watched with in the legislative session, I I was shocked to see the president of the teachers' union actually had a seat at that table, but there were no citizens. I was.
And and on the board, at the board table?
Whenever the legislators met.
Right, okay. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes, okay, yeah.
I was like, wow, that is really odd, but I I don't, I mean, I I I guess I wasn't that in tune to the teachers' union, because we live on the eastern shore, so you don't really hear it quite as much. Now you do, because we're Zoom and we're watching all these meetings. And so everyone can watch some, everyone can see that the that this teachers' union is at the board. What I found very interesting is a lot of teachers have now said, we don't want to be part of the union. They don't represent us. We don't and we have, Montgomery County is a pretty conservative area, the shore is. But we've had many teachers who've come in and spoken and said, they don't represent me. We don't want that representation.
That's a great point, because I will tell you, that's also true in a county like Montgomery, which is obviously more left leaning. And so the percentage that that don't associate with the political views of the agenda of the union is perhaps smaller. But it is a substantial a substantial group of people who don't necessarily share what they're what they're pushing at that particular point of time.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, too, on this, what what's driving all this interest in all these school board meetings? I mean, is it same issues that we're having out here in terms of critical race theory, the mask mandates? Or does a combination of different things?
I think so. And I think we, because we never had an elected school board, it was always an appointed school board. Things were done a certain way that didn't necessarily involve citizens at the table, making the decisions. But I think that now that we've had, we we have an organization that I believe they're statewide now, but there it's a Delmarva Parent Teacher Coalition, and they're in all the lower shores. And they're more of a conservative parent teacher group that speaks on behalf and advocates on behalf of citizens. So that's that seems to be a, I don't know, there it's it was interesting in the board meeting the other night. It went everything from the mask to spending to how they were distributing special education services. I mean, I it just seemed like people are just more vocal. They they feel empowered, like we can do this, we do have a say, and we're we're going, our voice is going to be heard. Which, I mean, I love that, I love citizen engagement.
I mean, how does the school react to that?
Well, they, I think it's it's been tough for them. It's been tough for them. They have had some pushback from the superintendent with really opening their meetings. I I did, I wrote our the district two representative, and I strongly encouraged him to vote in open session, because I think that the people really needed to know where their elected official stood and how they were truly representing them. And I think that's just been a little difficult for them. Our council meetings have always been televised, so we're we're so used to being on TV and always watching it and seeing it. And I think some of these boards and commissions and legislators who haven't had that in the past are it it's it's taken them back a little bit. And I think people are starting to come around, but it's 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 different when you have a camera in front of your face. And so it's 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 been a learning curve for them.
It's interesting you mention that, because there've been issues with open meeting violations in Montgomery County School Board. And that's before Zoom and television. So that was just, are they going to be out in public? They would have, quote, executive sessions, caucuses behind closed doors before they were doing it, which is contrary to what they're allowed to do. And it's been some subject to some kind of pushback going a while. But taking taking the meetings and making them available on Zoom so people could see it and having people participate obviously creates a whole other level of transparency that's really a healthy, healthy phenomenon.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great. I think that parents needed to pay more attention. I think that our eyes have been opened and even with the online learning and Zoom, we can actually see what our kids were doing. It was it was very, it's very different when you're there listening in the other room with their teaching, as opposed to your child just bringing a sheet home and saying, this is what we did today. So parents became much more involved.
So just shifting gears a little bit, and as you get ready to run for reelection and and you have a full four years, not just two years to work, what are the things that you'd like to accomplish on a on a a full term?
Well, you know, I have to say, one of I would like to finish broadband. I mean, we've I've gotten, just in the short period of time that I've been between appointed and elected, I'm pretty proud of my accomplishments, what I've been able to get here just this far, but I'm not done. There's still more that I want to do in broadband. We we're the only county in the state of Maryland that does not have county water and sewer. So that is a huge priority for us. We just had an engineer study and we're hoping to implement some of those steps within the next year to get that underway. So that's 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 going to be a project.
So you say county, so what do you do in Salisbury? Do they have a local, but?
They have a municipality, so Salisbury has a municipality.
Ah, okay, so they have it at the county level, got it, yes.
Yes, and so if you're not in those municipalities, you're on a private well and septic, which are failing because they're not up to current standards.
And obviously, from an environmental perspective, being able to plan ahead is is really very helpful and accommodates people. No, that's that would be very, very interesting. What else? Because you have a really, though, those are big ticket items that you're planning to go on.
You know, I would really like to, I really like to focus on economic development in our rural communities. I think that we have a lot of potential for growth, not just agricultural growth, but other industries that we could possibly bring to the area with water and sewer coming into these into the different pockets. I think that we're going to be able to expand that more. And your education has always been a priority of mine. I almost what got me into into public service was starting on the PTA. And I think that I think that is, education is such an important role in our county. It goes back to economic development. I mean, people move to an area that has a good education system. People want to live in that area. And so I think really focusing on how we can improve and how we can bring citizens, bring parents, make them feel like they're part of the decision, because it's 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 really important. We want to get people here, we want to keep them here. That's that's important to me. I want a place for my my children to come back to.
That's great to hear. So you've got a lot to a lot to do, but you've got, hopefully, we'll give you four years and and some additional Republican votes on the council to be able to to go forward on that.
I'm I'm very hopeful.
So looking ahead at statewide, do you have any preferences in in kind of, we're looking for governor, we're looking for variety of other offices? Any thoughts about some of those races?
You know, I I have not met the candidates for governor. I did meet Mr. Cox, because he had been in this area and he had invited to one of his events. I have not, I haven't had the opportunity to meet Kelly Schultz, but I've I've heard great things about her. Barry Glassman, I haven't had an opportunity to meet to meet him either. I think he was, I don't know if he was in, if he's come to the eastern shore yet. I think Dan Cox has been the one who has reached out to probably the more the municipalities and the county governments the most. So but, you know, I think there's a lot of great contenders.
It's going to be interesting, interesting primary. I will add one other candidate. If you go to the boardwalk to be able to meet Robin Fix.
Yes.
Motion City, he's he's there permanently from from what he tells me is he's that's some people, when they run for office, they walk across the state or something like that, or they've got some some approach like that. Robin has hit upon the strategy of of just hanging out at the boardwalk.
I have seen him at the boardwalk, yes. I take that back, I have seen him at the boardwalk.
So I saw him last Friday in Garrett County and I said, what are you doing here? You're you're out of you're out of position here. And anyway, and of course, not to forget, also Jim Shalick, who we should probably make sure you get an introduced, who's running for Attorney General, who's been a a good candidate here in in Montgomery County, but is famous for having been the prosecutor of Son of Sam in the Bronx before he moved down, I think, to a job in the Justice Department and worked as a lawyer here in Montgomery County. So we have, I think, a very impressive crop of Republican candidates.
Yeah, let's encourage them to make them to the eastern shore and getting to meet everyone.
Yes, absolutely. Well, we should do that. Now, redistricting, I think you're, you know, Andy Harris was really involved in your campaign. The Democrats would love to eliminate, would love to eliminate his dinner, right? I'm sorry, I just read, he would love to eliminate his district. And I've seen some crazy maps that would basically try and lump the eastern shore with some very democratic areas on the west side of the Chesapeake or to undo him. I can just imagine what the thoughts of the people are about something like that.
You know, I really, I really think that's not fair to the people. I think that Congressman Harris has been an excellent representative of the people. He's very connected to all the communities on the eastern shore. And I would just, I can't imagine taking that from the eastern shore, because it's it's just such a part of who we are. I would really hope that that would not, I hope and pray that would not happen.
Right. Well, we'll see. I think I've seen some really great plans from the citizens, the more non partisan effort that seem a lot more balanced. The districts are a lot more compact and they effort to try and bring communities sort of have one natural affinity together. And I think unbalanced would be a much fairer map, but obviously, there are going to be a lot of twists and turns before that happens. So we're coming up in the final minutes and and I really think, as is our custom, we really got to give you the last words. So Nicole, you have any final words of wisdom?
Let's see, words of wisdom.
You're going to get broadband, you're going to get you're going to get cleaner cleaner water and sewers and.
Economic development and better education.
Development and better education. You've got a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot to offer to the county coming forward.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate you having me.
Great, I appreciate it. And thank you for joining us. And as we always do, just a reminder that you can watch live, but you also can watch this on the Montgomery County Club's YouTube channel, where the video will be up just as quickly as Dwight puts it there.
Let me know when you're coming to the eastern shore.
Well, I I know the the dinner, you have a dinner coming up soon. And actually, the good news is Jim Shalick will be coming. I think we've been to whatever table we we've got coming over of of those of us coming across. So you'll have a chance to meet him then.
Oh, great, great, I look forward to seeing you all.
Great, thanks a lot.
Thanks.